Okay.
I'm gonna push play. Almost forgot.
What's up?
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're back again. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is January thirtieth. We are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers and we're one short, but she's on her way. So, James, you want to, uh, is there anything you want to go over before we take care of business? Shortly, James?
I had a conversation, I think I can get through this in about an hour and a half.
The whole meeting?
Over a hundred.
No, my introduction to this. No, we've, we've gone through the process of presenting a budget that maintains our existing tax levy. It is balanced. We have about a forty thousand dollar, forty-five thousand positive cash flow in a general fund. It, which helps to maintain fifteen percent cash balance, so it's right on target with what, what our goals are. It maintains existing staffing. And, uh, really, it's up to, from, from our perspective, as the departments have gone through their budgets, so hopefully they've been able to clear up any questions that you might have about what their priorities are, what they're looking to do. Some of them have had some items that they would like to see occur if, if it was possible. But, but what's incorporated into the budget is essentially maintaining our existing level of service and trying to keep up with as much of the CIP as we can afford, capital improvement plan as we can afford to do with our existing tax levy. If there are any preferences for changes, that's certainly up to you to, you know, just have some discussion of, if you have some preferences that you'd like to see, if you have any additional information you'd like on any of the topics, that certainly, we can go, go with that, but we don't have a, a lot of time, if you're looking to make any changes. We have to be in a position where we have a finalized budget by February eighth. So, it's not like there's a tremendous amount of time for an in-depth discussion that takes, takes a lot of thought.
Okay. I thought the departments did a really good job presenting. Let's, uh, let's deal with the situation at hand. Counselor, what do you got?
Do you want to wait until Annie gets here to discuss that?
Yeah. Okay, then let's go ahead and get, let's go ahead and get comments, statements or questions.
Alright, because I, I really don't want to do that. Well, uh, uh, there's a couple of things that came up, and this is my second time, so I know a little bit more than I did last time. And there are not any real budget. I appreciate the, the hard work that, that department heads and Jim, your staff's put in on the budget. It's, I am thrilled to be able to present a balanced budget. However, you know, the other part of me always wants to say, well, I wanna, wanna exceed to request and the one thing that kind of jumped out on me is utilities, looking at that. It looks like almost all our buildings went up in utilities and so, you know, the question comes to me is who's watching that? And really, where it boils down, Chief, I'm not, Police Chief Kramer, I'm not picking on you, okay? But fifty-one grand is a hard miss on utilities when we are going into a building that was occupied for thirty years. So, are, I don't, I'm not comfortable with, there was a statement, well, we'll wait and see what that looks like a, in a year from now if it levels out. I'm really not comfortable with that. I'd like to see some kind of plan of action as far as investigating, why are we fifty grand more for that and what can we do to, you know, cold air curtain, that kind of thing? What can we do to compete that? Because to be blunt, fifty grand in utilities is a part-time clerk you want, right? Then we could give that. So, that's just, that's just, it's just a spot that I see from the outside looking in. The other thing on Eric's department, I'm gonna, I said something to Jim, Eric, I'm gonna make an offer to you. I'm not the best business person, but I got a lot of years of marketing, I got a lot of contacts that we can leverage. I think we could, I think I could help, or I could find some people to help the Recplex and the Flint Hills compete. And I'm willing to offer any help you need on that. And the reason that came up is I used to be a slip hold, or a member, a seasoned pass holder at Flint Hills. And when I didn't sign up, I didn't get an email, didn't get a phone call, didn't get a text. And they had that information. So, there's some things that we do that don't cost us money where we can go compete. So, that's just a couple of things that I saw. And I'm not trying to pick on anybody, because I, I wouldn't want your jobs, to be honest with you. And I also don't want to get to the point of micromanaging, but those are a couple of things that I'd look at, so. I've made those comments last long enough, so now we can talk about the other thing.
Well, I don't know exactly on the utilities. Just to defend Chief a little bit.
Yeah, and I'm not singling him out, so.
He didn't develop the budget last year anyway, but we were in a building that wasn't fully used. Or we just moved into a building that wasn't fully used previously. The cost of the new facility over the old, we're using more space in that. The old facility had twenty thousand square foot in it. And you're now up at thirty, thirty-four thousand square foot. When, when we went into that process, we weren't looking to redevelop the full facility for our own use. And their goal had been to have a shared facility with the county. That didn't occur.
Okay.
So, we, when, when the county didn't move in, whether right or wrong, they, they rehabbed the whole space for police use. And, and there, you use almost that full, full space now. It's spread out more than what it would have been otherwise. And it wasn't, I mean, their original design, when they were gonna go into that construction, they weren't gonna have the size of footprint that they do. The electric, the, the utilities is based off of the, the footprint.
Okay.
And so, but, but that's not gonna, that's not something that they're in a position now that that's gonna go back.
Yeah, well, my concern, my concern was, is the statement was made, we got cold air coming in from the undeveloped area. Are we doing anything to wall that off?
It is, kinda.
I mean, I, I'm just asking those questions because I've had people ask me, Chief, so.
No, it's a valid question, and, and yes, we are. As we speak, we have some issues in that, what I call the canopy section. That canopy that, that you see where the cars are parked on the south side of the building. The second floor is above that, that unused section, so that floor is rather cold and we noticed it. And some things that were missed during the construction that I'm working through right now is the heaters in that canopy that go across that roof section there and which also would heat the floor. Those heaters were malfunctioning and were basically out of service. And so, they were missed in the, in the construction part of it. And I'm working with the architect and Carly Nelson and our property maintenance to get that corrected. And, and so, that's still within that, that timeframe of, of that building project. So, that's still happening. So, what you're saying is probably true, there's some things there we can do. And plus, there's some soffits up there that we're gonna put paintboard up on and, and do some insulation there. And I talked to James Estes and the engineers and the architects about putting that, if there was a reason insulation wasn't put up there to help insulate the unused section with the used part of the building. And he didn't know why. And so, that's still in the process, so to answer your question, yeah, there's some things that we're trying to do to work through that. And plus, we have some zones in there that aren't quite heated the way they should be. Because we feel cold air and stuff, so we're trying to isolate those.
Okay.
And this year is the perfect year to do it, because you have extreme temperatures and it really identifies those areas.
The very other thing to keep in mind is the line took a rate increase. So, that's gonna also have a rather dramatic impact.
Which is why across the, we have utilities budgeted up across the city because of that rate increase.
I, like I said, I'm passing on the, the question someone had. So, I appreciate, that's a great answer, so thank you. I'd like to know, I'm glad that we're being proactive on it.
Not that it's gonna lower the bill, but.
But at least we're looking.
I'm, I'm trying to, to make that a little more efficient as much as we can, so. But the square footage of the building that we use is, is definitely probably a factor as to why there's more of a cost per square foot.
Sounds good, reasonable, thanks.
Any other comments before we get down to business? Okay. Counselor, lay it out.
So, the other day when we were talking, we were talking about, we looked at the hotel revenues. And we're trying to come up with a solution that does a couple of things. One, it funds, provides some level of funding for the Capitol Theater, which I think as a group, we've agreed is, is important. And two, kind of prioritizes where we see some of those dollars going and what maybe they should be doing. So, I sat down yesterday and, and kind of had some conversations and, and looked at some different numbers and ideas and ways that we can do things. I know the mayor had mentioned that there's some desire to see some of that funding maybe go towards like a Transitions DMC. So, I came up with this idea. We would move the Art Guild to ten thousand dollars of funding, which is reducing them by two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The Burlington Municipal Band and the Symphony would remain the same at three thousand. We would reduce the Renewable Energy Commission budget to twenty-two fifty. And we've discussed the fact that they have, they have money on hand now.
What is that, a reduction of?
Uh, twenty-seven fifty. We would then fund the Capitol Theater at five thousand a year. And we would provide a thousand dollars of funding to Transitions to DMC with the purpose of those monies being used in order to prepare for an event that we had like this week, whether it's hot or cold. If it's a hundred and ten outside or it's negative thirty again. I'd like to say that as a city, we're contributing towards the preparation of taking care of the people that need to be taken care of. And the other move that then would also involve reducing the bridge run from six thousand to five thousand. That's my proposal.
Works for me. Well, I almost am happy with it, but it works for me.
I will say, I, I did have a conversation with a few people related to the Arts Center just to get their feedback. And they were supportive of this as well, because they felt that all of those moves were important.
Comments, problems, issues?
The only, well, go ahead, Linda.
I'm not comfortable reducing the bridge fund, that is a fundraiser, it's almost like we're cutting our.
For the city.
Yeah. I don't like, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that one, Matt. Everything else I can maybe work with. And then I have a question too, and this is maybe for another time. What is the Renewable Energy? I know you, we keep saying they have something in reserves, maybe they're budgeting that for a major project or something.
And yes, they've got some major projects planned coming ahead, that is going to take some of that money.
If somebody is being fiscally conservative and saving their money up for something, I don't want to say, oh, you're, you're, you're doing a great job in saving, so we're gonna rob your funds. I don't, I don't know if I'm agreeing with that either. I want to learn more about that entity and what they're using and saving their, their funds up for.
And, and I understand that. And regardless of, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent positive that whatever they're gonna use those funds for is gonna be something that we would agree that is probably worth using funds for. But at the end of the day, I prioritize the, um, the value that the Capitol Theater brings to our community through education and the arts a little bit higher than, than some of the projects that they, they're, we're talking about one year. This can change, this isn't set.
Thank you.
Well, that's, that's.
This is not set at all. We could change this next year, we could, we can, maybe hotel motel tax come back higher. If it comes back less, we have to have the same conversation twelve months from now.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think about over the next twelve months, um, where we see some of that money going. As far as reducing the bridge race, I understand that. But one thing that I'd like to say is, is that I have confidence that we can make up that difference either through advertising dollars or sponsorships or, or whatever. There's other avenues in order to come up with that thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, you know, I, looking at that, you know, Capitol Theater made a pretty compelling argument. Any of these groups can make a compelling argument. I, I didn't understand why Renewable Energy had a budget, but then, when you look at the things that they're doing, however, if I was on any other city commission or city committee, I'd be upset.
I know.
I sat on Riverfront Committee for years and we lamented the fact we didn't have any money to do anything, so I.
Ten thousand, actually, they've had ten thousand for five years and haven't presented.
They haven't, okay. Well, I, back in the day, so it's been a while. I, I, those numbers worked for me, Matt, I'm a little leery about the bridge run. My big thing, and I, I like that you said for this year, these should not be perpetual grants for these entities. Any, any entity that is charging dues or charging event admission needs to get to the point, yes, it's a good quality life, but they need to get to the point where they're self-sustaining, because we have other things in our community that we need. And I, I want to support these outside entities, these, these, these functions. You know, the Muni, Muni Band, I don't think that they charge for their events, these, a couple of these other ones do. And it gets down to the point, I'm a member of one of them, okay, if my dues went up a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks, so be it. You know, I'd much rather, they need to become self-sustaining. The same thing with Capitol. When I was on the Capitol Theater Board when it was first being formed, my concern was, I thought it was a great venue, I thought it was gonna be fantastic amenity for our city. But my concern then and is now is, is it going to be self-sustaining?
John, I, I agree with you to, to a point, but I think that if you look throughout the community, there's, there's a lot of things that will just never be that way. And the auditorium, the auditorium is one, you know, the Bs.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we're gonna play that game.
I mean, we could, we would be eliminated.
Those, those, those to me are, are up, those are, to me are up when they, when they come up.
I'd love to say that, I'd love to say that we could, we could do that and hold different organizations or projects or entities to that level, but I don't think we're ever gonna get there.
Well.
And, and if we start, if we start using that as the, the basis of whether or not we're gonna provide funding or, or not, then I would hate to see some of those amenities lost in our community.
They might be.
Because they don't have that back.
I agree, not, you're not, not everything is gonna pay for itself.
But I'm saying the Art Guild is, how long has the Art Guild been, I'm not picking on the Art, well, I am. How long has the Art Guild been getting the twelve, twelve-two?
Uh, four years?
Four years, five years, ten years?
Longer than I've been here.
And, and so, my question is, is that eventually, that should have a downgrading slide if, if, because they shouldn't plan on that money being in their budget every year. You know, because eventually it becomes, we're, we're having to say, we can't have policemen, we can't have firemen because we're doing this. And, and yes, it's important to me, I attend those functions. But eventually, that should slide down where, okay, you're gonna, we're gonna wean you off this money, assistance money. No one could, so, everybody's, when you ask how long has the Art Guild been getting twelve-five, well, it's been ever, ever since. Well, that doesn't mean it should continue, is what my point is. And so, when we, let me finish. And so, when we say that we're gonna give Capitol Theater five grand this year, I don't want to give them five, I might want to next year, but I don't want to be committed to it for the next twenty years. You know, and because then all of a sudden, there's worse efficiencies.
And I, I don't, I don't think we are. I don't, I'm, I'm strictly focused on the next twelve, twelve months.
I'm saying it to you, I'm saying it to the groups.
Right on.
Don't put it in your budgets for next year, because you don't know if you're gonna get it. Because next year, looking at that budget, it's gonna be tough.
Yep, I'm simply focused on the next twelve months.
They've got a year's warning to know that it's not, gonna not get pretty, pretty next year.
I see your point, but.
That's a reality.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think a percentage of our, it's a hotel motel tax dollars is required to go into the arts, something was, I thought.
No, we have a, we set by resolution what we're gonna put into, essentially, when we do the budget, approve the budget, we're doing that. The distribution by category, that legally, legally, and I don't know if we, did we have to have an election at some point on this? I can't remember how that works. State code requires that fifty percent is used for recreation, culture, promotion of the community.
Which were significantly higher.
You can justify that we're using all of it for that.
Yep.
Because the auditorium, the Bs, the Recplex, those are all things that are going forward.
I knew there was something to that effect, thank you.
Which, and, and trust me, I don't want it to sound like I'm against it, I'm just saying that looking at the budgets coming up to us, if, if sales tax and if especially the hotel motel tax does not come back, this, I don't want these people, these groups planning on this money to exist. They need to, they need to start working toward a lesser amount.
Well, and the reason why I said I'm strictly focused on the next twelve months is
Yeah.
we've got two, two big things happening in this community. One, we just finished the bubble in Recreation Center, and by the time the next budget season rolls around, they will have anywhere from
And RagBite.
ten to eleven months of operating. Right, we're gonna have RagBite in town. And then the other big thing is the Memorial Auditorium, I expect to take a big step this year. And if those things are doing what they're doing, that number up there that's highlighted on next year's spreadsheet, I, I think could be significantly higher than we're talking about.
That's my hope as well.
Having a great conversation. I'm optimistic that that's gonna happen. If it doesn't happen, then we have that conversation twelve months from now.
I just, that's my.
This was my proposal for this year.
I agree with it. I'm just saying that I, I, you know, a year from now, I don't want to be having the same conversation.
Reducing the thousand dollars from the bridge run. I mean, if I, if I have to come in here and help Eric go out and fundraise and, and come up with another thousand dollars in sponsorships, then I'll, then so be it, I'll do that. Eric doesn't sound too excited.
Yeah, you heard it here first. But.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see more information on how that's gonna strangle Eric and what he does. If we take that away from that entity.
If you pull it out, this, this is essentially goes right, the five thou, or six thousand goes right into your Capitol project.
Yeah, yep.
It doesn't, it doesn't go to fund the operation of the bridge run. So, what's your Capitol project?
We're doing a, excuse me, a playground next to the Dankler Park Pool, that small wooden playground that's trying to replace that to a toddler-sized playground that doesn't have splinters and is breaking down, so.
So, when the bridge run is done, they are, you receive sponsorships out of there. Your main one is Great River Medical Center for, this, this last year was five thousand?
Yeah, we make an annual request, it's not, they've had some changes, not guaranteed, so we're still waiting to hear on that.
And that, that helps to subsidize whatever goes on down at the event itself, along with the registrations from folks. Any net profit out of it after covering the expenses down there goes into your project along with the five thousand or six thousand from, from hotel motel. So, when you're cutting a thousand dollars, you're not cutting expenditures out of the bridge run, you're cutting it out of the Capitol project that they're doing out in the parks.
Right, but if, if we, if we go out and get another thousand dollars in funds, then that is gonna directly affect the bottom line of the bridge run, which is simply another path through towards the project, correct?
Yeah, we, we seek those every year, though. It's not something we're not out, we make contacts every year, so, yeah.
I understand.
What I want to know is, is, uh, do we have, uh, do we have three people that are satisfied with the balanced budget as proposed with the adjustments made suggested by the counselor, Mr. Rinker? I'm good. I'm one. Mr. Rinker?
I am one.
That's two.
I think maybe if, um, to kind of ease the concern about the bridge run, keep it at six and do the Capitol Theater, um, four. Because I know the ask was five. And then, and then there was a little back and forth where it was like.
Their ask, their ask was six.
Was it six?
Yeah. I'd really like.
And then you said three, and it was just as an idea.
Get him to that five.
Right.
I mean, and I'm, at the end of the day, like I said, I'll make sure that we've got another thousand dollars in sponsorships for that bridge run to go towards that bottom line. And I believe him, that is word.
Alright, I'm three.
That's what I'm talking about, counselor.
I trust you.
I'm in. Here's the thing, I, I was in and I didn't want it to sound like it wasn't, I'm just saying that.
No, dude, I, I appreciate what you had to say, and it needed to be said, my friend.
It's coming up.
It needed to be said.
It's coming up.
James? Okay?
Did you ask, Linda?
I'd like, I'd like to see more information on the Renewable Energy Commission thing. And I'd really not like to see the bridge run cut.
We can appreciate that and I respect that. I don't agree with you, but I respect that.
I used to serve on that committee and we worked so hard to build that thing up and then it has struggled. And last year, they did really, really well, and I'd like to see us continuing to bank on that. And I said, it could be a draw, like the BICS, and we could bring people in from all over, and we could really blow this thing out of the water, but not if we cut the funds.
Okay. But we got four, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. James, make that happen for us. Uh, let's do, uh, let's do closing remarks. Mr. Tisdale, do you have anything in closing? Peanut butter, you've expressed, you've expressed yourself and God bless you, do you have anything else in closing?
I can't think of anything.
Okay. Appreciate you, God bless you. Mr. Phillips, anything in closing?
Nope, I'm good, I value the, value the effort, uh, all the staff's put in the budget. It's, it's always an eye-opener and every year, you learn a little bit more, so thank you. I, the one thing that we probably could have done better is the explanations, but we're trying to, we're right, we're right up against it time-wise. You know, I'm, the one presentation that, that when Eric mentioned, and I thought we glossed over, he didn't gloss over, but it got glossed over, is five point eight million dollars of economic impact versus four point whatever it was one last year. That's a big number. You know, so yeah, we're having to support the Recplex a little bit more, and maybe there's some things we could do with assistance, but that's a big number that's helping our community. But because we're trying to get through these things, it, it gets compressed, so that's just the way it is. But I think our, I think our staff does a great job, I'm very proud of, of our city and, and I think we're, we're in, and again, for, for one more year, next year could be fun. Let's hope we have a good year.
It's always good times in Burlington, my friend. Mayor Protim?
Um, just, you know, thank you to all of your hard work with working on budgets and making those really tough decisions on what is not gonna make it to the budget. I know each, each of the departments care deeply about each of the things that they want to, they want to get done within their own department, within the city. And, um, you know, hopefully, things will be better in the years to come and we won't have to make tough decisions. It'll just be like, yes, we're going to fix this, this and this, and everyone will be happy. But thank you guys all for your, all of your hard work.
Well said. Counselor?
Yeah, um, same thing. I mean, you guys did an amazing job, uh, makes our job a lot easier. And I know there are some tough decisions to be made. The other, only other thing I'll say is, um, you know, our community's gonna continue to go down a path that's gonna make it tough every year until we make some, until this group creates some policy that hopefully turns that around. So, I think over the next twelve months, we can have the ability to make some positive changes and hopefully make this job easier for future councils. That's the objective. So, I know it's tough to have these conversations, but if we don't start, we need to focus on how we can alleviate this process in the future.
And thanks to Jim, we've done a pretty good job over the last, how long you been here?
I don't know.
Six years?
He doesn't know anything.
I know he had a better attitude when he first got here.
I know.
I didn't know you that well, though.
Point of order. Wait, no, that's even.
There it was.
I just want to say that when I started on council in two thousand and twelve, we had to borrow, I know you get tired of hearing this, but I never get tired of saying it, because the shape that we're in, we've come a long way, baby. We had to borrow money to make payroll. And we were in pretty bad shape, we're in really bad shape. And now, I'm not saying that everything is rosy, obviously, still tough decisions have to be made, but Burlington is moving in the right direction, we have been. And it's through a lot of hard work from a lot of departments, a lot of department heads, from our city manager. Sorry, that was hard for me to say. Almost gave me a stomach ache. But, uh, just really grateful for this opportunity. This is, uh, this is my last, but this is my eighth and, and last budget, yeah, I've been through eight budget cycles with that guy right there, and, uh.
So, you've been here at least eight, then?
No, seven.
Oh, seven, okay.
He got to go through a budget cycle two months before I came on.
Oh.
That was pretty scary.
Okay, so I went through seven with him, one without you. But, um, again, it's been a lot of hard work and a lot of sacrifices that have had to be made. And I know that some of you are still making sacrifices for us, so we definitely appreciate some people doing double duty, working jobs that normally somebody else would do, wearing a lot of hats. We understand that, we understand that. And it's hard to do the balancing job, you know? I was talking to Jim and he says the same thing pretty much every year. He says, well, you know, you can't make everybody happy. And it's the truth, it's, it's tough, but we definitely try to, we definitely try to. So, that's about it. James?
Good group to work with, so. And staff did a pretty good job presenting budgets at work and, um, understanding when, tell them that, that we need to cut a certain amount of dollars out of each, out of the budget and coming up with a way to do it. And not getting into what, infighting. That, and that's, that's pretty hard, pretty difficult to make, to do, to make sure that when you, when you're very focused on a given area and those are your prime areas and, and you don't get everything that you, that you know needs to be there to make things work well, to not get bitter and look at somewhere else that why, why are they getting funds in an area that isn't as important to you? So, this is a group that works well together and, uh, have the same thing up here. So, not everyone's on the same page as to what the priorities are, but when people are willing to talk and, and work through it and come to a compromise, that's pretty. and come to a compromise, that's pretty important, so.
If there's ever a fight, my money's on Rhonda.
I'm telling you.
Burlington, don't forget, we're really blessed, it is a great place to live, work and play. There's no perfect community out there, and we still have our issues, but we really do live in a city that the glass is half-full. It really is, so.
So we'll make the, the adjustments within the hotel motel tax fund. And I think that other than that, then not all the tables are ready in the, the overall budget book, but we'll be working to get that, the, the close to four hundred-page book done and ready to go. And we'll be having a, what, the set, set date for a public hearing occurring this next budget, or next council meeting? I don't know, somewhere in there.
Can you, uh.
Whatever she tells me, we have to do that.
Can you squeeze a little extra money to get a haircut? Your hair is out of order. Anything else, guys?
That's it.
Alright, thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you.
Night.